Issued for the addition. Construction and landscaping improvements must be initiated within eighteen month of the effective date of this resolution in accordance with section thirty-one dash sixty, parentheses, B, of the city code of ordinances, demolition, site preparation, and/or land clearing shall not be considered construction. Building permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by the city staff in a partial or incomplete manner. City council authorizes city staff to approve future amendments to the site plan administratively so long as the site plan does not deviate greater than five percent from its original approved site plan. This development must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all building approved within five years of the approval of the adoption of this resolution, or the adoption of this resolution shall not be con- shall be considered null and void, requiring the applicant to resubmit an application for site plan and special exceptions approval and re-initiate the site plan approval process. Condition number five, all future advertising must state that the development is located within the city of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with the city code will be levied against the property owner and/or business for violations of this condition. Once approved, this resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property, causing previous site plan approval resolutions to be null and void. Prior to the city's issuance of a certificate of occupancy and/or certificate of completion, proof of the updated recorded plat- associated with this application, BA dash twenty dash zero three, to be consistent with the lot configuration shown on the approved site plan, must be submitted to the city's planning and zoning division. Condition number eight is a public works conditions of approval. No truck trips may utilize West Thirteenth Street, west of Avenue R. This concludes my presentation. If you, if the board has any questions for staff, I'll be glad to answer.
Sure. Just so that everyone has a picture of the proposed expansion, could you put the map back up where you had the outlines? Okay. Well, this would suffice. Okay. This, this would suffice. Okay. And let me just start by asking the board members first if they have any questions. So, we can go down the line to my left. We're a little far apart. So, we're gonna start at the far end on my, I'm sorry, my left-hand side, if you have any questions.
No questions right now, ma'am.
I didn't hear you.
No questions.
Okay.
No, I have no questions.
Okay.
Um, maybe it's not the right time to say this, but I definitely thank you for number eight. Actually, I'm a resident on Thirteenth Street, and I guess just this week and past weekend, we had a situation where a lot of trucks were coming through. And, um, again, a lot of the neighbors are complaining about it, but we never have any issues with the UPS trucks. The UPS trucks are following the rules and regulations already, but some of the new people who are coming into the warehouses, their GPS is taking them through, right through the neighborhood, and the guy got stuck right in the middle because his truck was so long that he was scared to turn. And, um, eventually he got out about twenty minutes later, but thank you for putting that in and just making it a rule that they will, you know, look out for the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you.
No problem.
If, um, I'm clear, we have here on the map on the left-hand side, that is the new expansion quadrant there?
Um, well, the, this will show it better. Highlighted in blue is the existing.
Right.
The red that is attached to the blue is the proposed. Granted, this, this plan, the north, is to the left of the screen. That's the, that's north. So, it's different from the aerial.
And where are the houses?
On top.
On top?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's blue here on the right, on the right side.
Okay. All right. Okay. Is the applicant here, just in case?
Yes, the applicant is here, if you don't.
Invite them to come and share additional information before we go into public comments.
No problem. Sounds good. Um, we just wanna make sure whoever's doing the presentation can come up, and if you have no questions, make sure you agree to the conditions of approval.
Which one is it?
Uh, one of the PDFs, which are one of them.
You want to do it?
Okay.
I'll do the PDF.
Okay, you're set.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank y'all so much for having me and our team. My name's Clark Wells. I am a landscape architect and site project coordinator for CDFL. We're the design professional for architecture and landscape, and we also have consultants for civil from Neil Schaefer here locally, and also consultants on landscape planting from Barelli Partners here locally. Is this thing moving? Okay. So, as you can see, UPS, uh...
Are you scrolling?
Yeah. We're fighting each other. Okay. Um, you might just have to scroll. Because it's just bouncing. Um, so our team, UPS really, Josu covered, you know, really a lot of the high points for you, but just to give you some background, UPS has inhabited this site and built this facility in nineteen eighty-nine. They've been there since. They have five hundred and sixty employees at this location currently. Um, I think Josu covered most of the, the zoning, split commercial and industrial, you know, and really the, the need for this. If you move on to the next slide, we'll just show another shot of the existing facility. So, this is the aerial. North would be, you know, to the right side of the sheet, so that's Blue Heron there. This is their existing facility. It's just a little less than a hundred and ninety thousand square feet. Um, you can proceed on. So, the need for the addition really comes from just the influx of needing more delivery. There's more demand. I use Amazon Prime as much as the next person. So, UPS is really looking to expand this facility to meet that need in the Riviera Beach area. They're looking at seventy-five new job opportunities for this specific expansion, and along with adding the parking to support that. Move on to the next one. So, this shows you a rendering of this overall plan. So, on the right side, top part of the sheet, you can see the parking lot expansion, which is a hundred and twenty-nine spaces. There's also ADA revisions to the existing parking lot to bring that up to code. We're within that Blue Heron landscape buffer, so we really put an emphasis on increasing and enhancing the landscaping and have worked with Josu to make sure that's, uh, that's something that'll, that'll look nice and comply with all city ordinances up there. The building expansion that you can see on the left middle side of the sheet is kind of that L-shaped expansion of the existing facility. And strategically for UPS, this is done for a few reasons, to help support the existing package loading, you know, package trucks that are loading on that existing south wall of the building, also to maintain a lot of their operations while this hap- while this expansion also happens, because the deliveries must go on. So, there's a lot of the construction phase that we'll need to phase and coordinate to make sure operations continue. And then on the south side of the site, we're, we're enhancing the landscaping there and creating new buffer that also brings it up to, up to code. Josu already ran through the renderings, but just to give you a rundown, we're really matching the, the existing look of the building. Our roof line is a little bit lower than the existing, but it's mostly a mix of metal panel and concrete tilt-up. Moving on, we have a, a couple of renderings. This one just shows the expansion from, um, from the southwest corner of the site. This is from the opposite side, from the southeast corner. And then I'm glad Mr. Wiley brought up the, uh, the issue of traffic. That's something that thankfully Josu and Jeff Gagnon at the time made us aware of early on the process when we met with them in January. And so UPS took that very seriously, and, uh, starting in, I believe it was March, implemented a plan that redirected their traffic away from Thirteenth Street. And so, as part of this effort, we've completed a traffic study, which shows the existing traffic as well as our future traffic impacts, and UPS internally has directed all their traffic away from moving west on Thirteenth Street or entering from that area. So, all traffic is, there might be the occasional UPS truck that comes down Thirteenth Street. If so, they're making deliveries in that area. There's no active transit through there. And so, I believe, it sounds like that's been at least decently effective from your perspective, so we're, we're glad to hear that. So, um, and the traffic study, move on. This is the, this was entering and then exiting. You can see kinda all our, all our red arrows of traffic go away from Thirteenth Street and to other areas. The next slide. This is really a breakdown of, of our total traffic. All of this will, would be directed away from Thirteenth Street, so you can see our, our traffic increases on certain streets from this slide. But yes, as a general principle, you know, outside of what the, the city might have required, UPS wasn't really aware that there was a, uh, you know, a community issue with the traffic, so they were glad to hear that that, you know, was something they could resolve early on. So, as a matter of UPS policy, they no longer allow that regardless of what the city, you know, might have required for this specific site, you know, review. So, that's really an overview of, of, of what we're, what we're trying to achieve. We appreciate y'all's time and consideration on it.
Okay. Thank you. If you can remain standing, and I'm going to take an audit of the board members to see from your presentation if there are questions.
Sure.
So, again, we're gonna start at my far left.
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Wiley?
From my standpoint, um, right to your, to the, to the east of you guys, I used to actually manage the FedEx that's on the other side, the home delivery and everything, and, um, I know at one point in time, we talked about expansion there. The part that's exp- expanding on your south part, just for, I guess for my knowledge and for anybody who's interested in transportation industry, what specifically would you possibly be using that for, far as that expansion on that side? I know you need the parking, definitely businesses picked up, but what are you specifically using that for?
Are you talking about like the con- the concrete, the paved area?
Yes.
On the south side of the building?
Yes.
So, a lot of that, if you can go back just a few slides, we can, we can, to the proposed site plan. So, I, I kinda ran through the concept briefly of, of, of the need to phase this and allow this expansion to take place while also UPS is still operating.
Still operating, right.
And so, a lot of the concrete area, you see that expansion would happen before the building expansion actually happens, so that then trucks could have a way to circumvent the facility and go around the, the, a building expansion while that happens.
Okay.
Also, that, that space is used for temporary laydown or be staging for like an eighteen-wheeler rig. It may come in there and have its trailer there, and especially during peak times like November, December, when people are shipping a lot for Christmas, things like that, they may have an influx in traffic at that time where those trailers are temporarily set there. And there are no personal vehicles in that space. It'd be mostly UPS operation vehicles, extra package trucks for when they need more in December or things like that. So, it's really there to handle this, a surge at peak times.
Right. Bring back memories.
And also to facilitate the expansion. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just talking about the landscaping package. Blue Heron, there is not a lot of attractiveness at all from Blue Heron. It's pretty much bare, bare, if you will. And I see this is the first time that UPS is putting in a landscaping package and just do this quadrant here. You're one of the largest businesses here in... Riviera Beach, and I would expect as a business that you would step out more with landscaping in the front to add more aesthetic appealing, because you're pretty much it there on Blue Heron, and it looks like, from my view here, just sparse landscaping. One of the things too that we as a city have taught to businesses, whether they're coming in new or whether they're expanding, is to participate in dollars going towards a fund of adding, or giving us the opportunity to add art. Now, I know UPS is a different type of business, and maybe you could explain to us and to the viewing audience if it is just your standard protocol that you kind of remain up under the radar in terms of your signage or any art, but certainly the landscaping should kind of jump out on Blue Heron, because UPS is it. So, could you delineate if it's that UPS typically is understated except for being in Atlanta, Georgia, where it's just absolutely gorgeous? And then your landscaping, you know, I just wanna understand how beefed up that is for curb appeal.
Well, and, and I can speak to that some on the landscaping. We have a UPS representative who might wanna speak to some of the other things, but, so the landscaping piece, you know, the landscaping that we utilize here, our, our first objective was meet code. Second was to also enhance and, you know, and add to what was already there. I think a lot of the landscaping that, that was there in the past was probably pre, you know, it's been there since nineteen eighty-nine. I'm not sure how much of this was in place at that point. And so, enhancing what was already there and also wanting to be a good neighbor are for sure goals of UPS. Under the radar is also kind of a thing, I, I can't speak completely for them, but I would say that's, that's probably one aspect of it. There's a lot of activity at this site, which isn't necessarily consumer-focused or, or customer-focused. You know, they're doing things for the customer, but the customer, they're not trying to call attention to themselves in the, in this location. The, I would say their corporate headquarters in, in Atlanta that they pretty up for everybody, yeah, they're probably trying to call attention to that. But if there's, you know, we, we tried to add really as much landscaping as we would need to meet the, the Blue Heron buffer requirements, and if that's something that we need to enhance further and is something that the city is interested, that's something we can talk about.
Right. It, we're happy to see any aesthetic beautification to our community. We like to see our neighbors kick it up a notch and just not meet the requirements. Could you share with me this strip and right here at the bottom? Is that part of UPS, the, the ground there, and is that, are those shrubs there?
Those, those are trees. Those are tree plantings.
Existing trees or something that you're putting there?
Those are new trees.
I'm sorry.
All the, those are new plantings and trees. Yes, and so those would be mulch beds with low shrubs and then taller trees. Yes, ma'am. Those, those little pods you see going, going down the, the right-hand side of the street in the Blue Heron buffer.
So, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is those little pods, that can be kicked up a notch, if you will.
Become a, become a big pod?
Yeah, it can become a, a big, again, UPS is it in terms of the major business here on Blue Heron and being one of our biggest companies here as far as our statistics are concerned, when we talk about who we are and who represents Riviera Beach and UPS, you know, that is a, a, a strong brand with great value behind it, and again, you're it on Blue Heron. Other than that, it's just restaurants, houses, empty lots. So, it would be incumbent, and, and, and I know you...
Oh, we always want, I'm a landscape architect.
And I know you got the dollars.
Who are you talking to?
Yes.
I wanna plant stuff.
Yes.
Uh, okay, well, that, that's something we can definitely look at expanding.
Sure. And if the staff can address the question that, um, at this point in time, whether you're expanding or a new bill contributing to a pool for us as a city to decide where we would put certain artifacts. It may not necessarily be on the property of UPS, but they would contribute to a fund. Where do we stand with that?
I believe you're referring to Art in Public Places program?
Yes.
Okay. Currently, we are exploring opportunities to flesh that out, and so it may be a ways out, because it'll likely require us to get a consultant to really build the, the, um, the code, the writing for it, create a board and those types of things. So, that, we're in the process of establishing that. However, if a developer wants to engage with the city in some type of agreement prior to us having an Art in Public Places program, that's something that staff could set up and, and set up those conversations for that to take place.
I know that we're looking at having that happen. All of the detail or requirements or conditions may not necessarily be in place. I'm just asking UPS to be prepared to do that. You may not necessarily put artifacts on your property, but you would contribute to the pool to help us make, you know, beautifications here in our city. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Is, was Renee...
And, and just to clarify, you know, I said, I said that we started at meeting code. That's basically what we do on any project. We start out by meeting code, and then we enhance to the, the point the, the client or the city, the jurisdiction is happy with. So, UPS isn't just, they're not trying to do just bare minimum. They wanna do what makes, you know, everybody happy, you know, within reason. And so, you know, they're, they're, uh, they're definitely open to something like that, that right now they have no plans for a lot of that green space area you see there. So, if there are certain city initiatives, you know, art, art that would be displayed there, things like that, that's something that UPS isn't inherently against at all. So...
Right. Not necessarily that the art would go on the property, because I think UPS kind of is understated and is up under the radar for different reasons, but certainly just to contribute in a pool, and we would spread it around the city.
Fifty feet of, fifty feet of that property is part of a, a landscape buffer easement, which would be prime location for something like that.
Okay. And just for the landscaping, the little pods, just, I would like to see bigger pods.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're, you're it on Blue Heron.
Yes, ma'am.
And was Renee, council, I'm sorry, board member Renee Burgess on the call and had any questions?
She was, she was on the call, but she left. I never knew that board members was one of you that were participating. I thought it was only going to be the court.
Okay. I just remember hearing a hello, so I just didn't want to not miss anyone that was there. Okay. We do...
Just to, um, go back on what she, what she spoke of, I mean, again, you guys are UPS. You guys are the, you guys are the big dogs of the city, right? Like you said, you guys pretty much run that whole block, right? We wanna set expectations, so when other companies also come in and they see what UPS has in their advertisement and what you guys bring, we want them to come in and step it up also, especially to beautify that Blue Heron Boulevard, you know, going over from, you know, I ninety-five all the way to on the Broadway. So, just so everybody understands what the expectations are, you definitely expect some of the, the big dog to, to be able to be that, be that example.
Right. Well, so, so just for my clarification, is the, the landscaping angle, you know, increasing the landscaping, making it, it prettier, is that the objective? Or is, is, is having better UPS signage out there part of that? Y'all want them displaying themselves?
No. You can keep the, sorry, you can keep the signage the way that you want, because you kind of remain up under the, the radar.
Right.
It's more landscaping, beautification, because you are going to be the best in class there on...
Exactly.
Blue Heron.
Okay.
You're it. Outside of the empty lots, some fast food restaurants, and some homes, you're it.
Right.
You are the gateway into going over into Singer Island. You are the gateway of leaving Singer Island, going through Riviera Beach and hitting I ninety-five. You're it.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds good. I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, we just want you to be the example for us, for the other companies that are coming in, because if they see that, then everyone who comes in is gonna have that same expectation also.
We'll show FedEx how it's done.
Okay. We do have public comments on this item, and Mr. Gerald M. Ward of twenty-one thirty-five Broadway, would you come forward, please, and welcome?
Good evening. Carol Ward, twenty-one thirty-five Broadway. I would tell you that I saw this item on the agenda, and I didn't, I happened to be in Riviera Beach, so I had time to come by tonight, and I would tell you that this is one of the best projects that you could get. I had several comments here. I did serve on the planning board for the requisite five years in the middle of the nineteen eighties and was present when this project was approved. It is a great employment enhancement. You now will have almost three-quarters of a thousand workers, employees, based out of this facility, and if you, uh, track UPS on your, your packages coming, you will find that in the middle of the night, lots of packages stop there in the middle. I live in Key West, because it was warmer down there, but my office is still at twenty-one thirty-five Broadway, and I would guess that there are three issues that you need to point out. Water management, used to be called drainage. This was a primo project, and to my knowledge, it's never had a problem, although we do have a problem to the east of here at the crossing of the DOT's State Road seven oh eight, Blue Heron Boulevard, but that's east of Solatron, the U storage. The, it's a great functional system, and when you see it is, is on the peripheral. Howard Cersei designed it. It is approved by the water management district, and you've got to, to appreciate that the business handles its own water management. The traffic flow really was an issue. We had a city councilman that lived on Thirteenth Street, and she initiated some of the first restrictions in the nineties on traffic flow. I would hope that they, UPS, didn't forget about it in the latter part of the nineties or the early part of this century, but it has worked pretty well, and as somebody commented, they haven't seen trucks, I guess Mr. Wiley commented, no, no UPS trucks are causing problems. Finally, I would take issue, Madam Vice Chair, that the city is really the problem in relation to Blue Heron's perception. This project was approved as an industrial project in the late eighties, not the OP district, which is a commercial strips along Blue Heron. Both sides, particularly in this area, even Scott Evans with the CRA tried to do an OP project at F Avenue. It never flew. So, finally, they have come up with a use, and as you pointed out, it was a use for So, finally, they have come up with a use, and as you pointed out, it was a use for only a part of the project. So you might ask a few questions in closing. Just how much did the traffic impact study cost in time and dollars? How much future expansion is still left? Because I see further expansion. So we're going to have them come back in another 10 years, or 15 years, for more approvals. You often see the comment of the fire, that they had no comments. And back in the 80s, we often, when we approved a project, we said, "Now, you see that comment that there was nothing to do about fire? Don't believe it. Go talk to the fire department." Does UPS have any request? The Avenue R intersection with State Road 708, which has been a real problem, that's where everybody comes home. The trucks coming in tonight, I was out at the post office, and they were coming in in spades to go home to the UPS facility. That intersection may need to still be redesigned. It's obviously a city street into a state road, so you may have the DOT with abilities to make it better, so that trucks can turn in without damaging themselves. So, I guess lastly, I do think that January to November is an excessive time to go through CDEC, or what we used to call Community Development Environmental Control, now it's Community Development. So, we need to shoot for later. I'll be back to you under public comments to discuss the OP, because I thought that's the real reason I'm here. We've got to fix the OP. Thank you. I think they have.
You're welcome. And respectfully, if we have staff that could maybe address a few of his concerns before we go on with the agenda.
Just a ledger again, with Development Services. One of the, I'm concerned the speaker had in regards to future growth, our comprehensive plan does have a total maximum lot coverage, property can expand too. So, regardless of any future plans for the development team or UPS, they have to be within the maximum allowed lot coverage per the city comprehensive plan, so.
So, I guess there are additional questions, maybe perhaps we can get answered to those later, but we did get one addressed. Okay? Alright. We are at the tail end of the agenda here.
Madam Vice Chair, do we have a, are we going to call the vote?
Yes, I, yes, I see that we're at the tail end of the new business here. So, at this moment, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expansion that's been proposed to us this evening, as presented.
Second.
And we can take a roll call of votes. We have a second from Mr. Wiley.
Thank you. Anthony Brown?
Yes.
James Gallin?
Yes.
William Wiley?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
To date, no workshop items, and so we're going to go on to general discussions, and we do have a public comment. So, Mr. Ward, I think you know your place at the podium now.
Good evening again. Carol Ward, 2135 Broadway. The mid, well, the 70s, we had a PhD manager, Dick Orman, who was a planner. We came into the 80s with Devander Kant and Karen Galanca. She left here and went to become mayor of Jupiter for 25 years, amazing. Got trained well in Riviera Beach. We do things well here. OP zoning, as I alluded to, I thought that the...
If I may, Mr. Ward, could you give the definition of the OP, the, you're using the acronym?
Okay.
What does that?
OP is the Office Professional, which was the strip along Blue Herring, both sides. You go across the street, and there is a canal that parallels Blue Herring on the north side, but there is a small 100-foot depth, and that's the strip on this side is wider, and it goes further east of P Avenue, all the way to the Solatron there. On the north side, it is a very narrow strip, but it's never been developed. And it's a failure of our zoning, commercial-type zoning, not industrial. It was intended to do what you have exuded three or four times, have a beautifully landscaped, developed area, immediately adjacent State Road 708, Blue Herring Boulevard. And unfortunately, it just never worked for the marketplace. So, I think one of the objectives of this board is to push staff into doing a little bit of research as to either how we can modify, and that's probably the simplest, the conditions of OP zoning, to make it useful, and do what you want in terms of a pleasant trip from I-95 to the beachside of Riviera Beach. We need to do it all the way into F Avenue, in a few spots there. Even E to F Avenue on the south side is nothing but mostly vacant lots, not attractive. So, one of the objectives of the planning board needs to be, let's fix the Office Professional zoning to make it useful. Second, you referenced the boilerplate, or somebody did, conditions. Those came in in 1996 through 2016 as laziness and regulation by intimidation. Those items that are already in code don't need to be recited in every application that you have. It takes up your time, it doesn't get anything really done. All you need is a reference in the approval to compliance with the city codes, and have that as a handout that is part of a package of transmittal of any approval from this organization. I also would then go to time in progress. I hadn't met in person the new Development Services Director, but I've been on too many Zoom calls to, was on one today for two hours, and you're reeling when you get through with that. Particularly, I went on for six and a half hours, that's even worse. But Clarence has obviously worked on what we're calling fast-track permitting, so time in progress through the Development Services Unit has to be a factor. Back in the 80s, we used to have two to eight applications per monthly meeting. We seldom ever had a second meeting, and we knew it was going to be the same Thursday of the month, so we had everybody here on time. And I would tell you that it's very important to have consistency and education of you. Days of old, we used to go to planning conferences all over the state. Everybody, we didn't have the sunshine problems as we do today, but we'd get in the city van and go to Jacksonville, or Daytona, or Tallahassee. So, there are education opportunities that the city could very well fund and give you, to get you excited to do some new planning in Riviera Beach. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, and next, this is for staff, project dates and upcoming projects.
Good evening again, Madam Vice Chair. I would like to just mention some upcoming correspondence, in addition to those upcoming meetings. The, under the new direction of the department, we have done some restructuring, and we have created a position for a comprehensive planner, a long-range planner, to focus on things related to our comp plan and the city code, and how we can update it and make sure we stay, or do our best to stay ahead of what's cutting-edge in terms of the development community. Often, our codes are only updated when we have a project in front of us that doesn't fit, and they, you know, make a recommendation for it. So we want to stay on top of those things, we want to stay ahead of them. So, things such as the Art in Public Places program, things such as updating elements of our comprehensive plan, we're going to have a designated person to own those items, and to look into things such as what the citizen just mentioned into his comments. So that's one of the things that will be forthcoming in the department, and we will be working very closely, or more closely, with the Planning and Zoning Board members as these items come up, and developing these items before they go to council. So I look forward to working with you all, and I am glad to be here in my first meeting here with the Planning and Zoning Board. So, for our upcoming meetings, the next one is scheduled for December 10th, 2020. As always, we will ensure that all coordination is in place for that ahead of time, and that everything moves forward swiftly for that. But that concludes the Planning and Zoning upcoming meetings.
Thank you. I'm going to go down the line again and ask for board members' comments before we adjourn. So I'm going to start from my far left again.
No real comments, I just want to say welcome.
Thank you very much.
I have no comments.
No comments. But again, I know it's been a while since we had our meetings, and congratulations on your position.
Thank you very much.
And just so that you know, that we, a few of us are new to the P&amp;Z Board, and we saw very early on that we wanted to come up to speed in terms of everything about P&amp;Z too, so we can be on page with our colleagues who have been here a lot longer than we have been. Unfortunately, we lost one of our prominent board members who was spearheading that for us. He transitioned, and then COVID happened, and here we are behind the eight ball because of those two events. So yes, we want to get back on those sort of training, having the P&amp;Z Department fund that for us. And we do have a layout from our past board member who has transitioned, that he left work for us to do, and we certainly want to carry on his spirit in bringing us up to speed, so we can be a value to the city of Riviera Beach in our volunteer positions here. And with no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting, and thank everyone who is virtual here, present, for joining us this evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.